Back to the table. We are 45 minutes behind schedule and we appreciate very much that our FPAC members have been patiently waiting for this portion of the work session to begin. So, thank you very much. This is our semi-annual report from FPAC and I want to welcome Karen Hogan, Chair of FPAC. Thank you Karen for being here. Dan Amunov, the Vice Chair, and Charlie Hooky, the Secretary. And I think you have some other members of FPAC here as well.
If we could just take a second, they're prepared to introduce themselves, Howie.
Hi, I'm Kelly Springfield.
David Phillips at large.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for being here and thank you so much for your service on this advisory committee. So with that, Karen, please take it away.
Thank you for having us visit you during a work session and give us a chance to have more of a dialogue than we can during our annual report. Wanted to give you just a little bit of update on our retreat that we held last Saturday. We met at West Springfield High School, which is one of the schools coming up for renovation. So deliberately went there to see what the pre-renovation condition kind of looked like. We had some guest speakers that talked to us about safety and security study that was done in Wyoming. One of our members is familiar with that study and gave us a good discussion on how they brought their schools up to some basic security, starting with front door locks. So just really basic stuff. And then we also heard from a person who'd worked with the DOD schools on which the schools of the future look like. And they brought in a lot of people, as DOD does and can afford to do, from all across the country for many days of many sessions. People like Microsoft and Nike and other big corporations participated. And they came up with kind of what does their DOD community school look like primarily on overseas posts. But it really gave us a view into what a community center school could look like and kind of what the flexibilities that could be introduced in schools of the future. So those were the two main things. And then we spent the rest of the day working really hard on our committees. And you'll get some insight on those as I go through tonight's report. We have a charge that has four points to it. I'm not going to talk about them in the order that they're listed in the report or the charge, but kind of talk to you a little bit about what we're doing with the strategic. There's a facilities comprehensive plan that is a part of your governance manual. And last year, we had suggested that we take the CIP and we take the strategic facilities plan that our group had developed back in 2012. And it was adopted by the school board in terms of guidelines for future facilities and facilities use in the county. And we suggested that those be combined and added to so that we would have a comprehensive plan for facilities. And we've been working with the staff and with Dr. Garza on what that should be. And the first results of that you saw in this year's CIP, which looked pretty different. If you're familiar with the old CIPs and this one, we've come a long way, we think, over the past few years. And we think there's still some ways to go. What we're aiming for with staff is to develop an interactive web-based tool where we can all go and investigate the situation with facilities so that instead of republishing how we do bonds every year in a document, you can go in and look and see how are the bonds done. If you want to see the policy around it, or you want to see the county policy, you can have links to that. So that kind of a plan is kind of what we're all envisioning at this point, to evolve the CIP. And when we look at what the county requires you to give them each year in terms of CIP contributions to their CIP, it's a very minimal part, has to do with the spend plan and the projects that you have on the books for the next several years. So we think we can help you minimize what you have to approve and deliver to the county every year. The second piece that we have in our charge was to work with the staff to prioritize capacity enhancements in the CIP. And again, that was a suggestion that we had. Enhancements get funded. When we need capacity, the money gets set aside, the space gets built, and the kids can go to the schools where there's significant overcrowding. But what was happening was that was taking place, but it wasn't being really shown as a plan in our spend plan. So there might be a line item that said capacity enhancements, but nobody knew what schools or what things or how much. And we felt it was important to get that in there so that people would know where the money was going and how it would impact the time schedule for other capital investments. Because when we have to make those emergency kinds of investments, it pushes out the spending for the other investments. So we're happy to see that that was done in this year's CIP. And we'll continue working with staff in that area as well. Third part of our charge has to do with medium-term capacity issues and solutions. Now, when you looked at the CIP this year, you were just as surprised as we were that the growth in the school system has slowed significantly from what we have been experiencing. So a couple of years ago, we were sitting here telling you we have a real crisis, we're running out of space, we're not going to have room for these kids in five years, we better do something quick. That has eased up a little bit, but our caution is, don't assume this is a trend. Don't assume that's going to happen again next year. We have to keep an eye on it. We have to keep working on our projections. And the projection systems make sure that we get good data and that we can see what's really happening in our schools. So we don't think that we have a lot of immediate midterm capacity issues like next three to five years that are like a surprise to anyone. They're all reflected in the CIP at this point. So we're going to continue with this part of our charge to assess the impact of students who are attending schools that are outside of their attendance area. Because that, as you now know, is a significant factor in trying to project enrollments. The fourth area of our charge had to do with the reuse of former schools. And again, the pressure's a little bit less because we're not busting at the seams quite as badly as we were. But what we now have in the CIP is a complete listing of all of the buildings that the school system owns. And then we can see that some of those are located near areas where there's significant population growth and redevelopment going on. So we may want to suggest some use of those facilities as we continue our work. They may offer some potential for our capacity problems in the population growth areas. We also wanted to provide to you some comments on this year's CIP. Usually, we provide you our input at the time when you're considering the CIP. A number of you asked us this year if we had input, and the answer was no, we're kind of pleased with how it looks and what it's telling us, and how it's organized, and how complete it's getting to be. So we didn't give you any input at that time, but we do have a few things we'd like to just bring to your attention. The first one is to keep an eye on that enrollment growth. Don't assume that that's a trend. And don't become complacent thinking, oh, thank goodness, we're not growing so fast anymore. Another area is with the high school that's proposed for the western part of the county. We're not convinced that we need that high school. We're not convinced that we don't, but we're not convinced that we do. So our suggestion at this point is to validate the need and explore all options before we decide we're going to go buy a bunch of land at a very high price and build a new high school that will cost a lot of money, eating up the better part of a whole year's worth of our capital funds. Also, we think we should look at the impact of the Fort Belvoir Elementary School on the Route 1 area situation, because there will be a ripple effect as students are pulled out of their current schools and they go to Fort Belvoir. And we would like to see a more comprehensive plan for that area rather than a rolling sort of plan that says, let's renovate this school and do a boundary adjustment and renovate the next one and do a boundary adjustment. And by the same token, we need to look at whether we really need a new school in that area, even though we've heard from our customers that yes, they want it. Do we really need it? And if we're going to build it, let's make sure we know what the programs are that are going in there that serve the community well and serve the region well. The last comment we had on the CIP was that we really do think we need to identify some school sites in the areas where redevelopment is occurring, like Tyson's. We know there's an elementary school site, but that's it. There's also Reston and Herndon that are being redeveloped. And we'd really like to see some school sites being identified as those plans are being laid out with the county. We have two recommendations for you tonight that came out of our retreat. They're pretty much directed more for staff than for your decision-making. But the first one is that we'd like to see the ed specs that have been under review and being reworked and worked hard on by the community and staff for quite a number of months and months, that those be acted on this year and be put in place so that we can use them as we build and renovate the schools that are coming up in the queue. And the second one was, we would really like to see capacity, both program capacity and design capacity, shown for the brick and mortar part of the school and the modulars separately. We've seen in the CIP how many modulars we have and how many trailers we have. But what we'd like to be able to do is look at what is that program and design capacity of the brick and mortar piece, which lives a lot longer than the modular components that are added at the site. And that concludes my report. And we'll be back at the end of May with probably a whole slew of recommendations in the areas that we talked about tonight. But those are the only two that we had ready for you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I have a couple of hands in the air. Mr. Moon, followed by Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
I have one very simple billion-dollar question, or a billion-dollar question, rather, is looking at one, two, basically third paragraph on page number three. Let me read that. That is about boundary changes versus additional capacity enhancement. And you support the approach that using boundary changes as you need to balance capacity with an existing facilities prior to adding additional capacity. I mean, I know where you're coming from. I mean, that makes a lot of sense. At the same time, I know how challenging or difficult boundary changes can be. And we also know that if you add up all the existing capacity within the county, probably we don't have to build additional capacity for the foreseeable future. But that's not the reality. So where do you think we could draw our line? When we should consider additional capacity versus?
Boundary change?
Boundary changes.
I think we're going to have a recommendation for you in that area in May. We're looking at kind of where's the tipping point at a school? Is it 115% capacity? Is it 140%? Is it 102? And so at some point, your capacity of a school is going to drive some of those boundary changes. And then the other piece is, can you do something to increase the capacity? So I think we'll have something for you on that in May.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I think it's really helpful for you all to do a mid-year review. I'm always very appreciative of the work that FPAC does. And you certainly worked well with our community last year in the Mount Vernon and Lee area. So I know that the community appreciates what you do. I was intrigued and actually fully support your call for a measured, more comprehensive planning approach to that area, especially in light of the number of renovations that are going on, and, I'm sorry, the number of renovations of schools along the Richmond Highway corridor. And, thank you. And so I would like to hear from you a little bit about how you see the relationship to ensuring that we have community schools, that, you know, we have that neighborhood feel for our schools while we have a risk of overbuilding many of the schools just because we start to renovate, we build to capacity and create huge, as I remember Elizabeth saying, Ms. Schultz saying, Costco warehousing of kids. We don't want to do that. We want to keep neighborhood schools. And I know that the Mount Vernon Council of Civic Associations is going to be very happy to hear you advocating for a comprehensive look at more than just one-on-one boundary changes. So thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you very much. I appreciate this report, and I very much appreciate the work that you all do. And I think I told you earlier this afternoon, I know that your work and recommendations on our CIP and our CIP document has paid off well. So again, I want to thank you for that. I am pleased that you are recommending that we tease out capacity as a result of modulars, in addition to bricks and mortar, because you're right, the bricks and mortar last a lot longer than modulars. And of course, we already know that trailers do not count in capacity. And also, we know that over time, we've always had difficulty recognizing the number of kids who are attending school outside their attendance area, particularly kids who we don't understand in April or May that they actually are not going to be in their base school. And I know that the facilities has worked hard to be able to meld these two together, because that has a huge impact on capacity, particularly in some schools that have special programs. Then, I have a challenge for you, and probably also for Mr. Plattenberg and his group. I believe that some programs attract more children to be in boundary. And I guess one of the things that I am observing is that schools that already have an AAP center seem to be attracting more people to live within sight of that school, so that they somehow feel they're going to stay there forever. But it would be interesting to know, are there certain programs that seem to attract more in-boundary growth where there already is the opportunity for neighborhoods to turn over, for new housing to be built. And then the third part is I know over time, we've been concerned about the distance that students have to travel to get to a program. And that always was a special education concern. How far are we transporting some of our more fragile students? And these are out-of-boundary students going to sometimes where there is capacity rather than where is best for the student. And I don't know, I think we're doing better with that, in my sense. But I don't know how much better. But that, we've always had certain regulations on how long children can be on buses and how far we would take them. But I know that that is a balance. And so I'm assuming that as you go forward, that that's also one of the things that you look at.
The really good news is that I think with the new geocoding system that they're using for the students, we're going to be able to visually see that.
That's great.
And I think that will provide us a lot of, as a community, a lot of really good information about what students are actually experiencing.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yes. Thank you all very much. I guess I just had a couple of questions. On one of your recommendations, the first one, that the ed specs be acted upon by the end of this school year. I was just curious, I haven't really kept up with that. Did you have conversations with staff about sort of what the challenges might be to do in that? I don't know.
One of the interesting things is in the policy for the school board. It says that the ed specs are the superintendent's responsibility. And so she's working with the staff and they're working with her to get those done. We know that they've been a long time in the works, and we'd like to see them available for the planning for the new schools that are being renovated and built.
Right. No, I can see that. But I just wonder, as it's a recommendation, I don't know, maybe if Dr. Garza wanted to speak to that, or later, give us a sense of how difficult that would be and where we are in that. But I don't want to put you on the spot tonight, but if...
We can certainly present to you all kind of where we are with those. It's once you get, you know, the science people involved, everyone has different opinions about, you know, how many square feet should be in a lab, what's a lab configuration, how many square feet in an elementary classroom. So it gets complex, but I think we're making some progress. Kevin Snead has been working hard at that.
I'm sure. All right. Thank you. Just a couple of things. I agree with the caution that you suggest on the western area high school. I also think it's, you know, very expensive. And, you know, I know that our high schools out there are getting larger, but that's such an expensive thing to think about. And I'm not quite sure how I'm asking this question. But on page three, you talk about Tyson's Corner, Reston, Herndon, and other communities along the silver line. And there definitely is some angst in the communities there, I think particularly of Westbrier, you know, areas that are, they don't know how long it will be before we even get that elementary school in Tyson's. And in the meantime, apartments, you know, buildings are already being built. And do you have a sense, and I don't know if this is really within your work, but do you have a sense of whether we're having the right conversations with the right people about that? I mean, do you have any recommendations for us about how we can move along people's understanding on the county level of what we need?
That's a topic of one of our March or April meetings, that we're actually going to dig into that some and try to ascertain. We have one of our members looking at the county side of that and what the planning documents are showing. And we're also reaching out to the people that are developing and planning for those areas. So we may have something in our annual report for you. Dan?
And you also are probably all aware of the situation going on in Richmond with regard to the proffer bill and how it's going to become harder and harder to have impact fee or space, you know, relative to these kinds of developments. It's going to be impossible almost. Despite what you hear, most of Fairfax County would be subject to the rules. So it's something that hopefully they can resolve before the end of the session.
Thank you.
Ms. McGlocklin?
I first want to begin by thanking both FPAC and Dr. Garza. We are blessed to live in a county where people have tremendous subject matter expertise. And I think the creation of FPAC has only helped to strengthen the work of the board and the school system. And the fact that Dr. Garza has, along with Mr. Plattenberg, have really helped create a wonderful effort here to collaborate. It's such a value to the board. And so both sides, your real commitment to trying and making this a type of shared effort, because through the recession, we've had to lose a lot of FCPS staff. And Mr. Plattenberg's departments are especially taxed with trying to deal with the overall challenges of the 10th largest school system in the country. So the work you do, I hope you'll convey back to the committee, is very valuable, very much appreciated, I know by this board. And I really appreciated this mid-year report as well, and that bringing us up to speed on the work you're doing. It was great to get sort of a crash course update. I do want to support what Mr. Moon was saying, that I think that given the challenges we have to get to our renovations and our CIP needs, that looking at our boundaries, so we can maximize capacity usage, it has merit. And so having us all recognize that boundary changes are difficult, and I don't think anyone at this board takes them lightly at all. But I think that we also do try, obviously, to find that sweet spot. Where can we identify where, and I think of my district, Woodson Pyramid alone, five elementary schools within a mile and a half of each of them. If you were making a small boundary change, or even Woodson and Robinson and Lake Braddock, I mean, they're all so close. Those are examples where you wouldn't necessarily be ripping apart neighborhoods if you had to do some adjustments based on sizes. So I just think it's something we have to be mindful of. I think knowing that we are a school district that is plagued by over 900 trailers, and I think Dr. Garza, somebody gave a statistic recently, I mean, Montgomery County has home next to nothing in their trailers. So, you know, here we are, that's our closest competitor of a competitive school system, and our kids are grappling with, our teachers are grappling with trailers. So it's something that we have to keep trying to work on, because it's important for our children to be in the facilities and not just in the learning cottages. And I know that Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg share this desire as well. It's just, it's not optimal learning settings for our kids. And then I also appreciate what my colleague, Ms. Hines, had to say. I think that when you look at Tyson's and Reston and Herndon, I appreciate you all keeping that on your radar. It concerns me. And speaking with my Braddock District Planning Commissioner, I know she's looking at it as well, the estimates of who they think will move into that mixed use versus, you know, what the reality might be. We have to be prepared for that. And I hope through FPAC and Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg, if you need the support of this board to make sure that the supervisors and the planning commission are really taking into account the school system's involvement in this. It's essential, because I think we have some areas of the county where we haven't had that kind of partnering in the planning. And as a result, our schools and our communities have paid the price of being overcrowded before we even opened the new schools. So I know we're short on time, so I will just say thank you again for your service.
Ms. Darren Kofax?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate you being here. And I'm sorry, I'm no longer your school board representative, because I was really just getting to know you all. I do appreciate your work and suggestions and enhancements we saw on the CIP this year. I think they were very helpful. So thank you for that. Also appreciate your recommendation of, you know, like Janie said, teasing out the capacity versus modulars. I think that's something. And what Ms. Hines said about, you know, I think we all hear a similar angst about the Tyson's area and so many of its unknowns. I mean, that's all going to be new to us. And I think we need to pay close attention to that. And finally, of course, when we talk about, you know, the Richmond Highway area and the Route 1 corridor, you know, we're not really sure, as you said, because you told us to be mindful, that's part of your recommendation of student growth. And we're not sure if this is going to be indicative of where we are. And, you know, the Richmond Highway corridor, the growth has been great. Trailers and modulars are many. And our need for community schools where optimal learning is provided is what we want for that area. So, you know, I think we do just need to take a look and look at the numbers once the Belvoir Number Two is on the books. And I think because, you know, the new Pinewood Lakes School that's proposed, that relieved capacity kind of from one area, but also there was still additional capacity in other areas. And, you know, I think maybe two years ago in this conversation, there were considerations for not just that one, but maybe two. And, you know, the repurposing of Virginia Hills. So we're not exactly sure where we are. And I appreciate your, so we look forward to just continuing to look and work there. But, you know, as Mr. Moon said, I have not been on the board long enough to see, but I can imagine what the boundary challenges are going to be when we talk about, because they're going to occur no matter what, because we have a new school, and the new school has to be filled. But we'll figure that all out. And again, just thank you all for coming tonight. And thank you for being part of our partnership team.
Thank you. And I'll take a turn with a couple of comments and a couple of questions as well. I do agree with you about watching the numbers and the projections. You know, we did see some pretty dramatic shifts from one year to the next. And we do need to be very careful that we don't underplan or overplan based on just one year. So that's certainly something to watch. And in connection with that, you talk about doing boundaries before we add capacity. That certainly is less expensive. When you come back with your annual report, are you planning to give us some specific recommendations on specific areas, or is this a general philosophical recommendation that you're giving us? I mean, nobody likes I mean, nobody likes boundary studies, nobody does, so, but the question needs to be asked whether this is something that, where you're going to recommend.
Yeah, first of all, the statement that we used was in support of a statement that's actually in the CIP. So, we were just saying that we support that statement that the FCPS is making about using the capacity and doing boundary changes before we add more. And we're not targeting specific boundary changes right at the moment, but as we do our work looking at the midterm solutions and problems and issues, if we see areas that have near-to-midterm type of capacity problems, we will bring you recommendations on those. At the moment, we don't have any that we've identified as something. And we were charged this year to try to look a little further than next year, but look more at the three-to-five-year timeframe. So, as we're doing that, we can see what's happening in the interim, and if we see a problem, we will certainly raise it.
Okay. Because I do think we have to be aware of that and not build more capacity or more schools if it turns out we really don't need them. I agree with you about the modulators. I think that would be very useful. Did you get, did you talk with staff about that or get a response from them? I don't know if Dr. Garza or if Mr. Plattenberg wanted to respond, or if you're not prepared yet to respond to that idea about the modulators. To, yes, to separate them out.
Yeah, we have no problem with that. I think that would be, have to wait until the next iteration of the document. So, I think that's kind of a forward-looking, kind of what can we improve next time? So, I think we're very open to those ideas.
I think that could be an important change for getting the real story about a school because, you know, I think about a couple of my schools, you know, Glen Forest, for example, you know, where so many of the students, maybe a third of their students are in a modular, and so I...
And it helps us tell the story. I think Mr. Moon's talked about this as well, is about, you know, how we've got to develop a plan to get out of the temporary building business, and so, we've got to be able to tell that story.
Right. And of course, when you build a school, the core space is built for a certain level. So, even if you have classroom capacity, that doesn't mean that you have gymnasium space or cafeteria space. So, that, I think that'll give, so thank you for that recommendation. And I guess lastly, on the proffer bill, Dan, thanks for bringing that up. I think we're going to be taking a look at what impact that might have on us, and is your understanding that it would basically eliminate proffers for schools?
It is. It's got a certain FAR requirement to it in certain areas, but, you know, and the way it's worded, it's, it would affect most of the county, if not all, the whole county, the way it stands right now.
Because that...
And, you know, it's, I mean, you wouldn't even be able to have a discussion with a developer about the issue. I mean, it would...
So, that could really cost us a significant amount of money if that passes, and I think we need to have a conversation about if there's any way to moderate that bill or keep that from passing.
And it would apply to the, you know, of course, the dollar student yield proffers, but also land dedication requests as well.
So, that's huge. All right, well, thank you so much. I see at least one more hand, and then Dr. Garza's going to get the last word. Mrs. Schultz?
So, I'm very glad that Ms. Evans brought that up, and I'm glad we're having the discussion. It's something I've been looking for, is an exit strategy in the CIP for modulators, for learning cottages, for quads, for temporary facilities. And so, tying together, you know, short and long-term strategies, one, when we, if we renovate and expand, having an exit strategy there, but really, an exit strategy across the board, certainly when we install a new one. If we install a new one, what is the, what's the exit strategy for getting out? I feel like I just, like a, I don't know, like a holiday, and it's more than an annual tradition, so I don't know which holiday it would represent, but I'm going to get out my Christmas tree ornament, my Easter ornament, my Fourth of July sparkler of the SAC classrooms and recapturing SAC classrooms. It's a lot of space, 6,000 seats, the last time I counted, and how we can assess the restoration of SAC rooms. I know it's probably beyond our F-PAC, you know, relationship, but, you know, as we begin the navigating what we're doing with our committee structures, this is a, my multi-annual plea that we look at this from an assessment standpoint, and certainly, the subject matter expertise that exists on F-PAC could provide some recommendations to us to recapture space where it's, I mean, there's crowding at all levels, but, you know, certainly, elementary school is foundational, and if we can figure out a way to get some rolling cabinets or something and recapture those classrooms for use during the educational day as classrooms and not just like flowover space, I would love that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garza. You have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Sandy. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support, your guidance, your collaboration with our team. You have been very helpful to the work, so I want to thank you. I'm proud of the CIP and the great work that's been done there, and I give you all a lot of credit. Also, have to give our team, you know, Jeff and Kevin and Amy and so many others who've worked so hard to make that a better document. We just met today on some planning around boundaries, so I find all this, you know, certainly interesting. We also use geo-coded maps, so the board will have an opportunity to see those in the coming weeks and months ahead, and they are very helpful. And again, a credit to your guidance, support, and certainly, our team. So, I just want to say thank you for working so closely with us and helping us get better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your work and appreciate bringing everybody here, and thank you for joining us tonight. And with that, this work session is closed.
Okay, we will just take a two-minute break, and then, we'll start the last topic for the evening.